Yeah, you could put it over the owl before we stand up, that would be good.
Good evening. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health being held in the townhouse on May 6, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person remotely using videoconferencing technology. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Thank you. Is anyone else recording the meeting other than ourselves?
I'm guessing Dalton.
Dalton, you on there?
Nope.
Well, we just assumed that he is.
You got him in the waiting room? Man.
Well, there he is.
There he is.
Okay.
We'll wait for him.
Recording Dalton? Yeah, we are. Okay. Any minutes?
No, there's not.
No minutes. Okay, make a note of that.
What?
No minutes.
It's 5:00 AM. Did you ask how many minutes it was?
To be more than a meeting.
Yeah, highways.
Well, we do have the annual town report. I'd like to thank.
Yes, we do. We do have the annual town report. Superintendent of highways?
Hello.
Do we have highways? I thought we just had streets.
Highways, byways, roads, sidewalks, crosswalks.
Dishes.
A little bit of everything.
All right. Have a good one.
Okay. What do you got?
So I, so there's a couple of things on the, um, the agenda for me tonight.
Anything more first?
Okay, sure. So, uh, put out an, our request for quotation for pickup at the plant for just, for just FOB pickup at the plant for hot mix asphalt. We had three companies respond, um, and quite honestly, I, I was, uh, kind of surprised on, on the outcome. We have a clause, there's a clause both in our invitation to bid and then also when we had it, kept it for the RFQ. And it's a clause and it's a, you know, um, other towns use it. It's, you know, he, it's a calculation. Um, if their hot mix plant is so far away, you tack on so many cents per mile, per ton. And most of the time, that kind of deters, you know, like a, a company maybe from Connecticut or wherever, anywhere, further away, um, from bidding. I mean, they're still welcome to, to bid or, or send in a quote or whatever, but. So this time around, we had a last minute submittal from Northeast Paving. And their plant is in Granby. Now, um, we haven't drove it yet, um, but on Google Maps, it's about 33 minutes away, 18 miles. And even with the calculation, they still came in way lower than the next lowest bid. I feel the town has two options. Uh, we could either re-bid it or sign a contract for one year, try it out. I'm told that they have the hottest mix in town and I said, I hope so, or around, and I said, I hope so because we're going to be driving for it. But it's a one-year, uh, deal with the option to renew two more consecutive years if both parties agree.
But would the price change? You would hold the price for two additional years.
They would have, yeah, they would have to agree.
Because I mean, otherwise we did it right now, it would be at this price for three years.
Correct. I mean, that's, I mean, that part price is just kind, it's unheard of.
Right. That's why we need to guarantee that if we give, you know, we need the option to renew at the same price.
Oh, you want to have them agree to that?
Well, I mean, otherwise you're giving, we're giving away two potential, I mean, if we give them a one-year thing, they'd come back next year at 88 or something like that without a.
I see, yeah.
I mean, normally it'd be a three-year contract, two-year?
Well, one year and then what I'll usually do is, yes.
Right, yeah. Um, who got it last year?
Palmer.
And they're not on it?
Didn't bid it.
They didn't even bid, uh, which was another surprise.
Lane?
So Northeast is the old lane.
Okay.
Yes. So, um.
I mean, they did Main Street a few years back. They aren't.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah. Like I said, we can, we can try them out and, uh.
Well, I mean, they're the old lane, so they're reputable. I mean, lane.
Oh, yeah, they're a big player.
If the concern is that the distance and how it arrives.
Yeah, that's my only concern and it's, it's a big concern. Couple reasons. You know, uh, you know, at the opening, uh, the gentleman from Northeast asked, you know, how much do you usually get? And I said, well, we usually get anywhere from two ton to seven or eight ton, a full load. You know, when it's colder out, you want to get maybe another ton or two extra to keep the middle. See, we don't have heated bodies in our trucks or anything, so usually you'll get a little extra to keep some of it warm, for the ride back and then working with it throughout the morning or, or whatever. So there's that. And the other concern that was brought up too was if, you know, we get all the way out to, because this happens, but we get all the way out to Granby and the plant is closed or there's a line out, the door, whatever. Um, in the past, we've been able to, you know, hop over, it's not that far away between, um, you know, Palmer Paving and Ag, uh, Agla, um, Palmer Paving in Springfield and then cut back through over here to, Palmer Paving, or we'd shoot over to Gleason's in the past, which is right around the corner on Berkshire Avenue. Gleason's, by the way, is now Warner Brothers. Warner Brothers, who is a.
He used to make movies, now they're into.
Now they're into asphalt, yeah.
Yeah. How many projects of your project list would use this? I mean, you go, the bigger ones, the bigger ones have their own contract and you're giving them a contract. So this is for a very small type of.
It is. So it's, you know, with, with a project list, we may, we may use that service for touching up driveways or whatever.
The piping work, if you had to cover over the piping work or something like that.
Sure, yeah. Um, mainly, you know, we, we use that service mainly in the spring when we're filling in washouts, potholes, things of that nature, so, um. So that's.
What temperature does it have to be at?
Oh, um, I don't know off the top of my head. It's gotta be pretty hot.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty hot. I'll say that for now and then I can, I can actually look that up, but off the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah. Cook and bake and data on it.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I think with the low usage, uh, I don't think we're really taking a flyer out at this point. It's really not going to impact any real projects. Looking for a motion to award a one-year contract to Northeast Paving for the Potuminos Concrete FOB. I was giving you a motion, but that's fine. Second then.
That was a motion.
That was my motion.
You said, I'm looking for a motion.
I just asked him if he was looking for a motion.
Sure. Good.
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So I will.
So we're going to do Northeast Paving.
And hopefully with options to renew.
Okay. I'll reach out to them tomorrow. Actually, I'll reach out to all, all of the, um.
I am surprised about Palmer.
Can I ask you one other question? What's the difference, what is the difference between driveway mix and base mix?
Really, the difference between all of these mixes is, is the size of the stone.
The coarseness and the fine.
So a basement more, berm mix is real fine stone, driveway mix, same thing. Then you start working your way up top mix, or I'm sorry, working your way down top mix and then base mix or dense, it's, the stones are a little bit, um, bigger.
That's why you know it's like Kibbe Lane for the longest time, was that rough?
It says per ton, they don't need a whole ton.
Palmer sold out.
They did?
Yes, you have to buy by the ton.
It's owned by a company in Albany. They've resigned the checks now.
Yeah, they were bought out as well. So, uh, next was my first draft on, on this year's road projects.
Are these in priority order, Mark, or what'd you say?
Well.
Is this one done?
Oak Knoll again? Is that the third time in five years?
Yeah, well.
He has to keep, he has to keep filling in that pond.
So, no, they're in no particular order, uh, to answer your question. I just had some of the, the bigger projects on, on the first page. The page before, I just want to bring attention to, um, the total state funding for this year is actually quite a bit, yeah. What's happening, I, you know, I, so the state's getting a lot better with, with pushing the paperwork through, getting the reimbursements out. What's happening though is they're, you know, so they're giving out more money. There's only so many paving companies and they are like busy. So, you know, like what happened last year, or for the last two years, we get started and then do as much as we can do and then we have to finish in the spring.
Can you carry it over? The state funding, can you carry it over if you know?
If you've, if you've already made a project request, then you, then you can't. However, if I didn't make a project request.
You can accumulate.
Then we can accumulate for 10 years. Yeah, it's a 10-year contract. So that would give us, well, just with the chapter 92.5 million after 10 years, if we wanted to go that route, save up for a big project. And then that's not to mention.
It looks so good after that one, man. It's like a race track.
Yeah. And you know, and then you add in the, the fair share tax allotment and this new, uh, rural roadways funding, which I, you know, I don't know if that's going to be in, in annual. I'm assuming it is.
Did they put that in, they put that into your chapter 90? They just put it on the same account?
Both of those they did, yes. Yep, yep.
So a pretty good number for this year, 200 plus in new funding, basic.
Sure. So the first couple of projects, um, I figure would be, uh, state, state funded for the milling and paving. Um, because it's a, it's quite a bit. That, uh, section of Allen Street and then all of Mill Road.
So that's where we had, Dana had tried that new type of thing on Mill Road years ago.
The crumb rubber chip seal thing, yeah, yeah.
So that's coming out and this is a real standard pave, basically.
Would be a mill and pave. Um, not only that, uh, the gas company will have finished their projects. They still have, they've ran, they've run their main line and now they still have their, um, service lines to run. So, um, now about the gas company, um, I can, I can talk to them and whatever money they were going to spend in, in their restoration, I can opt to have that check come to me and use that towards, towards it, yeah.
And the only thing on here, you had the repair on the bridge that was done a while back, right? That's going to be redone.
Oh, yes. Yep, on Mill Road, yes, yep, yep. Um, and then I was looking to do, um, Oak Knoll and Fernwood. Now, both, both roads are in, are in rough shape. Now, we've put off Fernwood for a number of years, because of the drainage. I, you know, I still don't know where we're going to go with that drainage or, you know, what, what we can do with it. Um, I think we missed our opportunity, um, to, uh, acquire that piece of property, um, in the back. That's since been sold.
Oh, it has?
It has, yeah. So, um, that doesn't leave us with much option, options. However, I will say, you know, with the amount of rain that we've had the last couple of years, I mean, it's draining off. It drains off slow. It's very flat. That waterway kind of meanders through the back there, crosses under Sessions Drive and goes into Wilbraham. That's also very flat. But it does drain and I haven't had a lot of, a lot of calls about.
I thought you had that big pipe through Vinnie's property, right? Wasn't it?
Well, that's one of the service, one of the outlet lines.
Back into the swamp, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's three of them. Each, each set of basins has its own outlet. And, uh, we just haven't been able to come up with a, you know, I know Dana tried like crazy with different engineering firms. I think even maybe like the, the Army Corps of Engineers came out to look at it.
I think I know Tom Kutter looked at it one time and like you said, it's virtually flat, so short of digging a big hole in the middle of the swamp and then forcing it to drain, you weren't going to get anywhere.
You know, and that was a thought, if we were able to acquire that property, um, maybe file, you know, file, go through the steps and, and give it a, its own retention area, like, you know, we do with the new developments. Don't know if that could even be done, but it's a thought. But anyways, um, so the drainage is working, but I would like to address the surface of those two roads. A gutter mill would give us, uh, it would actually accomplish a couple of things. It would re-profile the road to give it a, a good, a good crown in the middle and, uh, lower the gutters a little bit, um, to allow the water to drain off, off the middle of the road. And also it would save us a lot of money in, uh, matching up the driveways as we go through, or not we, um, the company that goes through. So basically, they, they will mill the gutter, they set their machine at zero up towards the middle of the road to an inch and a half, re-profile the road and then match the driveways. And then another thought I had there was, uh, Riverside Drive. It's a, it's a small drive, it's a small job. But, um, we've got a, I've got a resident there that's, um, he's taken a lot of water. So I want to try to re-profile that road a little bit, maybe add some berm and, um, and in the.
So, but I mean, if you take that berm down there and you're directing the water to flow around the corner.
Sure.
And not into his property, are you then dropping it and letting it go right into the river then at that point? Or are you putting another basin there that just put a pipe to the river?
We might, we might try to aim it towards some other basins that are in the area.
Which go right to the river.
If, I'm, I'm not quite sure yet, but they could, they could.
I'm surprised you need traffic control on that road. Somebody put cones at one end, cones at the other end.
The only reason is, um, yeah, coming out of Main Street and Chapin Road. That, I mean, and that number is, is.
It's your standard number.
Yeah. And then there's alternate projects. I'd like to try to include just if, you know, if there's any, anything extra and we can.
Well, your first two pages come up to what? I mean, I don't get your alternates. You're saying with all the alternates that comes up?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. The, uh, the alternates are not included in the total, um, total cost.
So these five, these five.
They come to 781 to 46, so it's a couple thousand over the, over, but I can cover that out of, uh, my highway, highway maintenance. A couple thousand.
I have to say, and this is just back to history, the transfer station road overlay, just historically, that was what the enterprise fund was supposed to accumulate money for.
Oh, okay.
You know, I don't think they have it, 17 grand. I'm sure they don't have it, but technically that money that they get was supposed to take care of the maintenance, et cetera.
Okay. I can come up with, I can come up with a, a few more.
Yeah. Um, I would, your Roger, oh.
The road going up, or the driveway, and then there's still a center section. Um, but again, this, these are just.
Where the piping was and all that, or?
Uh, no, just right.
Didn't the piping come up the center?
Yes, yeah, you're right. Yeah, the, the water pipe, yes. And then I've got, I've got a list of all different projects, various numbers that I can, I can plug in in the event we do have extra money, um, I can plug in some other, some other projects.
The only one I might suggest and probably Craig was going to mention the same thing, the Glendale Road, because potentially that might be affected by if the water district gets expanded, so rather than, you know, do any work there.
That I have on there.
Yeah, Main Street to Bennett, and if it turns across, road coming down.
Yeah, okay, yeah, cross that. I did have, I did have two different sections at Glendale. Another one was, uh, from North Munson, around the corner there by Ridge and then part of Ames going up the hill, but I, I didn't include that in this one, but.
Back to the transfer road thing, I think, uh, if you think the roads deteriorating, I think it might be a question we might want to have with Amoresco and see if all the construction they've done has impacted the road quality. And it might be something we might want to go back and say, look, this is the type of operation where you go in and do no harm. And just talk to them, maybe you should take care of it, maybe you should give us something towards it and have that conversation with them. They've been good to work with, but I don't think it's unreasonable for us to bring it up.
No, I don't either. Um, I'm currently working on a punch list with.
Rob?
No, with, uh, Tom Spate from DEP.
Right, that bubble was supposed to be with Rob Keever and take a overview of the whole thing.
Sure. He's making his own punch list, uh, from the eyes of the DEP and, um, I'm making one from the eyes of the town hand. And, but we've met up there and compared notes and.
Okay. I know I talked to Steve McDonald.
Okay.
And said we need to have another recap meeting at some point in the next couple of weeks.
Sure. When they're going to fire that thing up?
Yeah, but if that's the connection they're doing from Eversource, all that wiring down Allen Street, yeah.
Yeah. I will say Verizon.
That huge money, remember they said the interconnect cost was going to be, that's part of it, yeah.
Verizon what?
Verizon was in town today doing, uh, removing, removing poles up on South Road, some of the double poles. So hopefully they stay in, in town and, and keep going, so.
Were they on your list?
Let's do South, yeah, those, South Road.
There was several.
So, South Road that we had with.
Tell them which numbers he wants to cross them off. He's got that as a cell list.
No, we can get into, we can get into the system.
They were moving right along, I can say that.
Okay, that's good.
And we started today, uh, with our spring paving on, on a few side streets to finish up from, from last year's.
Starting to prep up for Memorial Day and things like that.
And we're starting to prep up for Memorial Day, yeah, absolutely.
On the double poles, I have double flags, I don't know.
Well, we've got to get those holders switched over before they.
Exactly. They take the pole off, take your holder with them.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Well, uh, equipment, still on track for the tractor sometime late summer?
I'm hoping early to midsummer, yeah. Um, so that's, yep, that's, that's on track. I have a call into, um, Mark Otford just to see if, if, just to make sure that there's no, uh, price adjustments for the, the truck I'm, um, asking for, for town meeting. Um, he, when, last time I talked to him, he didn't believe there would be, but I, I just want to make sure there's no surprises. And, uh.
Is that with the trade-in? I mean, decent?
No, I didn't, I didn't get a trade-in value, uh, yet, but I, but I won't.
Till right now, the number you're carrying is hopefully a purchase out and you could knock a little off for that trade-in.
Absolutely, good.
Even if there's a slight increase, maybe the trade would offset it.
Yes, oh, yeah, for sure, yeah.
What about the lawnmower you're looking into?
So I decided to put that on, on hold, uh, maybe till Balltown meeting or next, maybe next year. With all the talk of the potential of, uh, the town possibly taking over Thornton Burgess or, or whatever, I wanted to let that kind of play out before I made a decision on a, on a mower, because I might, that might affect, I might want to try to get a bigger one. That's some acreage over there. I don't know how things would work as far as splitting up, cutting with the ball fields, you know, with the park and rec department. Um, we'd, we'd figure it out, but, um, just kind of waiting to see how that, that plays out. And, and I think we could, we could get another year out of what we have, yeah.
Okay, you're coming down to crunch time on Warren? Any advertising out there for new person?
I plan to get the advertising out this week. Um, I didn't get any calls or emails or anything on the last advertisement I put out, which was surprising, or maybe not.
Don't take it personal. I'm sure they're not talking about you.
No, uh, so, gonna try again. I was gonna look into, you know, somebody had mentioned Indeed that they're using that. I don't know. I've never used it. I was gonna look into it, see if that could help a little bit.
I've used it before. Why don't you send it over and we can talk?
Okay, sure. I mean, it's just another. So, see what happens.
Well, if you need extra help, you need a guy with a tractor, I know a guy that's got a tractor.
I, I know. So. My daughter's got the sheep.
Wow.
Somebody put those into the transfer station.
Exactly. Be billing us. That's fine. Great, sounds busy.
Let the paving begin.
Okay. So I'm, I'm good with this, this list then. Okay, yeah, thank you very much. I'll get started on that.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Only 12 minutes over so far.
We're doing good. All right, and our Vader discussion, how we doing on that?
I'm not discussing anything yet. I'm not sure what you mean, how we doing on it.
Well, let's see what we could agree on, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Now, you don't want Vader on the cloud.
Correct.
Okay. So would you agree that the servers, the computers are the property of the town?
I think having it isolated is the safest thing. I don't.
The question is, do you think the servers and the computers are property of the town?
Oh, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
Okay. Do you think the town's responsible for paying the maintenance for the computers and servers?
Absolutely, because my, my item is law item.
Okay. Do you think the information on the data, the computers is the property of the town?
I don't have any problem with the information on the data.
Do you think it's the property of the town?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you think the town taxpayers pay for the computers, servers, security?
Absolutely.
Okay. And that the taxpayer records are public information?
They are public information.
And that the town has a contract with Entree, the service that maintains the computers?
They do.
Okay. And that both Entree and Vader have advised the town of the potential server failure?
They always advise us of that. That's, that's been our ongoing thing since I can remember.
Okay. And that as public officials, taxpayers pay our salaries?
I'm not disagreeing with anything. I'm not sure where you're going with this.
Where I'm going with this is this. I respect that you're an independent elected official. All right? And I know you believe that we're trying to interfere with you doing your job. And, and it's not our intention. Our intention is to make the other people's job productive, productive and easier to do in a collaborative manner. And the, the equipment, the server, the information all belongs to the town. And it would behoove the town to have it a safe, secure place that people who have to do their job takes, can get access to it. Now, you don't want to tell anybody to tell you how to do your job, but you have no problem telling other people how to do their job. So they're trying to.
Well, I'm sorry, how am I doing that?
By telling the assessors they have to do it this way or you're not going to play ball.
I, I have not told them that. I have never told them how they can do things or what they can do.
Well, they want to put it on the cloud.
But it's not their system. It's, the system itself is under the administration of the collector's office, not the, not the assessors.
And it's owned by the, and it's owned by the town.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
It's the data that you said you wanted access to and that's not a problem.
Well, they have to go into your office to get it. If their server's going to fail and.
They don't come into our office to get it. They have a computer in their office that they've been using.
And they can't, and they have connectivity problems?
They have not recently, but not that I've been made aware of. They did have before, but I think that has all been resolved.
I don't believe so, but.
Well, I have not been made aware of mine in several weeks.
So you're adamant that they can't access that data?
They can access the data.
But only the way you want it to be accessed.
I'm not sure what you mean. I'm not sure what you mean by only the way I want it to be accessed.
Well, the town feel, we, uh, at least I feel, I don't know how the other members feel, is that it should be in a cloud-based system, like so many other things are. So they can access it from home if they need to, or if they can access it from their office, or if they come in on the weekend or something else.
They can access it if they come in anytime, twenty-four seven. Accessing it remotely, that's, I don't see the need for that. It's not the program that they use. They use their own programs, and they access those remotely. That's up to them.
Okay, but you know, we have a contract with Vadar to do this.
We do have a contract.
We have, and we have a contract with Vadar to do this.
We have a contract with Vadar to maintain the system.
And to move, move it to the cloud.
No, that was never an agreement with, with Vadar.
Well, it is.
That was when I spoke to last time that we, the last time that, that contract was renewed, that was not an option. Frank and Kelly agreed that it would be done the way it's been done.
He did, he did say that to you.
He did say that. And I, I'm not sure what your ultimate goal is.
The ultimate goal is to put this, these stuff on the cloud, where it's secured, it backed up every single day, and then the assessor, or the treasurer, the accountant, whoever needs to access it, get access it. It's as simple as that. We don't care how you keep your records, we don't care what paper you keep in your office, or anything else. The thing is to have a productive system to kinda bring us into the twenty-first century, and have a safety, and don't start with, I know you're all techies, cuz I'm not a techie, I can barely use a cellphone.
I was not gonna say that.
And, and, and have, and have a, a system that everyone can use, because it's about a collaborative effort, effort. And hundreds of towns are moving towards it as a, as the simplest, safest way to do it.
Currently.
So that's all we're trying to do. We're trying to do it on a congenial way, and, and trying to get it to work, that's all, that's all we're trying to do.
There's a system that they can use twenty-four seven, as long as they're here in the office, or in the townhouse, I should say. Having it remote for them, when it's accessed maybe twice a year, doesn't make sense like that to put it on the cloud. And I think the security of the system is actually better when it is not on the cloud.
Joe, can I for a second, Doc?
Do you think it's, do you think the security, yeah, go ahead.
The, the thing that concerned me is when Brim was here a couple of months ago, he was showing me some of the issues. Um, I know some people call it a server, but it's actually a, a RAID drive. It's two merit hard drives.
Right.
Um, Brim was concerned because one of the hard drives is in fail state.
There's no reason that can't be replaced.
Okay, but then the, the thing that was concerning too was the interdepartments that are connected through this, it's an intranet, because there's three computers connected, hardlined. They have to use Microsoft Access O-three, which is an unsupported software now.
The system is, um.
Uh-huh, I'll, 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 I'll let you have a second.
Okay.
But the, the programs that be able to access this data, from what I was told by multiple people, was it runs off Access O-three, which is out of date by numerous generations, it's no longer supported. So that was the concern too. One was the, the failure of the hard drive going, losing the data permanently. And then the other thing was the, the systems needed to access the data were no longer supported by Microsoft. And the way that it was set up, they couldn't upgrade, for some reason. I, I don't know the details behind it, I'm just going off of what our IT vendor was telling us.
There's no reason that the service in the office can't be upgraded, and the access, as you said, is an intranet. There's no reason to upgrade those programs.
Sure there is.
If they're not going online.
If they're unsupported, if there's ever a problem with the software.
The computer in the assessor's office uses, if it's used for anything, it's used only for Vadar. There's no reason to up, update that.
Sure, I mean, programs, when you get new computers, sometimes they, they're not forward compatible, because systems change, and then now that's, that software then becomes obsolete, and at some point it becomes so obsolete that it won't run.
If it's running currently on a Vadar system, and that computer is only used for Vadar, there's no reason to update it, unless Vadar chooses to upgrade.
So, but don't, don't those computers sometimes go online to pull data? Ever?
The only time anything goes online is when we have an occasional.
So they do go online?
One time a year.
So at that point, if there's something that's gonna get in, it's gonna get in there?
If it's gonna go, we're going right to the Vadar system.
Right, so.
And we go through our server when we do that, so if there's a problem with our server.
It's, it's secure because it's offline, it's obsolete because it does go online at certain points.
Okay, so you're saying that going through the server for the townhouse is not secure? That's what you're calling here, cuz we go through the town server.
Well, yeah.
We're going online, we go right to Vadar, to their program.
Sure.
And so Vadar is not secure either?
No, that is, w- w- you're, you're not understanding what I'm saying.
I am understanding. You're saying we go on one time a year?
Right, your, your point is that it's secure because it's not online.
No, no. You're saying we go on one time a year, and we are not secure because we go on that one time a year, exactly.
Your, 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 your mince and words.
And I missed that, I'm sorry.
You're, you're telling me that you wanna keep it offline because it's secure.
Correct.
My point is, if there's a, a need for somebody to get in, a- anybody can get into anything online, no matter who it is.
Right.
You know, there, there, there's really good people that can hack into that stuff.
I understand.
So my, my point is, if you're going online one time a year, you're still connected to that ethernet cable, and if somebody's waiting for that system to come online, they're getting into it right then and there.
Okay.
So the, the point about it staying offline because it's secure is obsolete, in my opinion, because you're still connecting it.
How, how does that, how does that computer go online?
You're, you're the one that told me it went online.
Okay, and it does, and how does that happen? We connect it to the town's internet service.
Right.
So by that, you're saying the town's internet service is not secure?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying if somebody wants to tunnel into something. No, you're, you're, you're not understanding.
You've opened the gate to the highway.
You're opening the gate, you're connecting in. I'm not saying that they're compromised, I'm saying, but anything can get into anything.
I understand that, but I just find it.
The town system isn't secure.
No, it's not, obviously, cuz that's what he's saying.
No system is secure. That's the police chief, right.
Thank you, that's true.
To the point, no system is secure, but we have the firewalls, we have our data redundancy, and we have our IT vendor who runs maliciousware programs every day looking for data.
My point, when we go online, we go through the town server, and you're saying we're not secure when we go online? So by going through the town server, we're not secure?
You don't go through the town server.
When we go online?
No, you go, you connect into the network, and the network has a connection to.
So our network is not secure?
No, any network is not secure. You have, but here's the thing, and if I can jump in, Craig. I agree with Craig. To me, the number one priority is the failing of the backup.
So we.
That's the first thing, getting that fixed. You have a Drovo system, maybe Al put it in twenty years ago.
No, it's not that old, but we can get another backup. I'm having a new server, whatever you call that.
Number one, you have data like anybody else here should be backed up and secured.
It is, it can be backed up to the town server. That's not a problem.
Well, I think you get your RAID thing fixed, number one. When you go on, but that also means probably you don't have any antivirus software that's current on those computers.
It's easy enough to put that on there.
But they're also not serviced remotely by the IT vendor we pay for that remotely takes care of every computer we have here.
Again, it can be put on there. I'm just curious again. When anyone in the townhouse goes online, they don't go through the town server, through the town's firewalls?
They do.
That's a firewall, that's not a server.
Right.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, the town's firewall.
We have a sonic wall that protects, right.
Okay, so when I go online, I don't, I don't go through that same system?
You probably, you probably do, you probably do, but nothing's a hundred percent. They have teams out there looking to break every firewall.
Yes, they do, and that's my big concern, that's why we're only on it once a year.
Right, but my point is, when you go on it once a year, if there's, if, and I'm not saying it is, if somebody is sitting there waiting to run a program, they're waiting for that static IP to come in, and they're like, oh, it's on, and it's already in before you even know it.
So by you saying that, everybody here is vulnerable every day.
Everybody in the whole world is vulnerable.
Okay, so I, I, I will take that chance with one day a year.
But I'll tell you, right now, I'm connected to our town network here.
I understand.
First message that comes up on my computer is, you're connected to an unsecure Wi-Fi network with weak password protection. Thank you.
Yep.
So.
Makes me feel good about it.
Well, yeah, I can see that. Obviously something our IT vendor is gonna work on. I'd like to focus, I understand your point, I understand Don's point, we all have good points here. But the overriding thing, you have no reliable backup on this data software right now.
We do, we have it, we, it's backed.
No, it's not working, and my point is, it's, it's on, it's in danger of failing. I think both Brim said that.
Again, that can be remedied by replacing whatever he called that. It's not a server, obviously.
It's not, it's a.
Well, I put that, I put that at the top of my list.
It's, it's just a secondary.
And backing up, and backing up the thumb drive, backing up the, the data to the town.
That's not secure.
That's not great.
That's not secure.
That's not great.
Backing up to the town server is not secure?
No, no, backing up to a thumb drive is not secure, it's not a.
Well, no, no, but I mean to put it onto the town server. Backing up the information to the town server is secure, obviously.
Well, how are you backing it up to the town server?
You put it on the thumb drive, you put the thumb drive in the town admin, excuse me, tax admin, and you can back it up to the server.
So how is that?
So you're thinking you're walking it over to another computer?
No, you're sitting right there and moving it from one side to the other.
Okay, you're rolling over to the other computer.
Yeah.
So if, if you're putting that data from one computer onto another one that's on our server, what's the difference between going to the cloud?
Because the other server can go on the cloud. I don't care about that one, it doesn't maintain the, the system. But taking the, the information from one computer on a thumb drive and putting it into the other computer is very different than putting that, both of them on the cloud or on the internet.
Not following. Why is it, why is it, why are there different things?
If this one's offline all the time, and you're only accessing the information, the data.
Right, so then.
You can put that data on a thumb drive. You're not doing anything to that computer now, you're just putting that thumb drive in a different computer.
Okay, which, which has the data, right?
I have a question that might clarify. Are you worried about someone stealing the data, or you someone, about somebody altering or corrupting the data?
Corrupting the data? I'm not worried about, cuz the data is just.
So I think that.
That's the difference she's describing.
So the data corruption, I think, has more of a chance to be corrupted from going from a thumb drive to a computer to computer, because if you don't eject the thumb drive right, or if the thumb drive fails, or you, you put it down on a magnet, it's done, or, you know, gets left out in a car.
It's one quick process. It tells you when you're done with the download.
I think there's less chance of corruption on the, the data if it's on the, the Vadar system.
How often do you back up to the local server?
Weekly.
Sorry, Don.
Oh, not your local server, to the, to a thumb drive, to something else.
That's, that's the local, I mean, how often do you do the thumb drive thing?
Weekly, and that can move right over to the town server. And there, there won't be any magnets or anything else involved, we'll move to the other.
That town server must be filling up pretty fast. No, I'm saying, we had the same problem, like, I think we heard that from other departments, that these images just keep building up on the town server. And until we got the server into the cloud, right, we were all running out, that's why we had to do the upgrade.
Right, they weren't overriding, they weren't overriding, they were just back to, back to, back.
Not even incremental, there are full lengths, right.
So, if I can just ask, Don, I think your concern is you think that people working from home, they should be able to access it, is that your main concern?
My concern is I don't think the information you have is secure. I think it's probably corrupted or corruptible, and that people should be able to work tandemly together, at their, you know, when they can do it. So, and we do have a contract with Vadar.
I do understand.
Which was signed, which was, which was signed in March for the cloud.
But really, the only thing that putting on the cloud would be, would make it more accessible to other people, to everybody.
Yeah.
And maybe that.
And the town.
And they're, those people have access, those people who need access have that now.
Only in the town hall building.
You want to pass the hall?
In the town hall building, that's the difference.
I have access, if I can get you a little step aside, so I can.
There's two.
And I can never get that one to work. I'm sorry, I can never get that one to work.
It's the remote people who can't get into. The assessors have, well, the assessors have a hardwire to a computer in their office. But they can VPN, well, maybe they could VPN.
You mean work from home, or work from somewhere else?
I think it's on the computer too. I think it's on the computer too.
And this gets back to you, they're running Access O-three, not even seven?
That's what Brim.
But that, that's, that sounds more like it's a Vadar issue than a, uh, Microsoft issue.
Yeah, I think it's more of a Vadar issue.
I mean, if she's running, well, when was the last time you upgraded your Vadar software?
I think, I don't think it can be upgraded, because of, access has to be upgraded.
The last time Brim upgraded information for us, it, it did a problem, it caused a problem with Vadar.
You can't upgrade it because it's, and you have to have Brim explaining, cuz I'm doing a poor job right now.
Yeah. Brim, the last time Brim upgraded our computers with whatever program he was on, access need, um, sorry, Vadar needed thirty-two bit access, and his was different, so we needed to.
Most of them are sixty-four bit access.
When's the last time Vadar did a software update?
Can we buy more?
To be honest, um, I thought we did an annual, and so that would be about the first of the year, the first of this year.
When they do the bridge, they do an update?
I think that's what they do, if they're gonna do any updates at all. They don't have that many of them on the system.
They're not supporting.
Well, it's almost a concern, sounded like here, and it may have been part of his report, that some of the computers that are operating the, we'll call the, the collector.
Network.
Vadar network are older computers that need an upgrade as well.
And that shouldn't be a problem. That shouldn't be a problem.
Well, actually, maybe in the list, we already talked about.
There was an issue too with corruption of the data we had, that Vadar had to rebuild, right?
And when was that? Why would I, why would I not?
Might have happened a year, might have happened a year ago or something.
Why was I never made aware of that?
And they did it for free, they, they should have charged us, they said. There was a.
Again, why was I not aware of that?
I thought you were aware of it, I don't know. I'm being told from the assessors that there was a corruption issue with the data, and Vadar had to go back and rebuild everything.
Yeah, but their data, I mean, the assessors.
No, there was a problem with the, the, whatever data that was pulling off of our servers went onto theirs and was corrupted.
I think that might have been a Patriot problem.
I was just.
Yeah, I think that does sound wrong. I think Kelly did refer to Patriot.
Patriot said some bad, Patriot changed their program. Norm said they're not able to audit it well. So some bad information was sent to Vadar.
Okay.
Now, there was a, this was a, this was, this is not Vadar's problem, it's the Patriots.
I do not, that I remember.
And that was last December, right?
Yeah.
Excuse me. I'm not sure of the issue.
He wants data on the cloud.
So do I.
You're on the cloud with work.
Yeah.
I know.
Why would I worry about being on the cloud? I've been on the cloud now with them for five years, and I've never had an issue.
He wants, he wants the, the tax collector program on the, on the cloud.
But don't that.
Because I don't feel it's secure.
It is secure.
I understand.
Just because you don't think it's security, but come on.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't feel it's secure. I feel it's more susceptible.
I know, but I, I think it's time that we have to live with that.
Again, I think it's more susceptible, and I think the program itself is functioning well. And the, the only issue would be for other people who access it remotely, as he said.
Okay, and one of these days, we're gonna be faced with that problem, anyway.
What's that?
Going on the cloud for everyone. One of these days.
Yeah, and I'm hoping we'll be up here by then, not, not with respect to the collector's office. I get the feeling that will be the case anyhow.
Man, I appreciate you, and I appreciate the work that you do, and really, you know that.
I, and I understand where you're coming from.
But I just don't understand your concern. It does seem to be over the top as to what the exposure is.
Well, they say mother bear. I, I just feel like it's my responsibility to protect the system, and I feel it's better protected when it's not accessible through the internet.
That, I, I can agree that you feel responsible, but I think it's irresponsible not to, to be frank.
Who really disagree?
I know, and I, you know, I, I'd love for y'all to go on. It's no inconvenience for me to come in here and go say, well, I, I would not. I mean, anything I would be able to access at home would be read-only. You know, so I would never be able to change anything. I couldn't go in and pay my own taxes, you know, or something like that.
You would never know, a lot of people do hear it out.
Yeah, well, I can't, so, um, but I think, I mean, yes, it would be very convenient for me to access it from home, depending on a time of night that I can't sleep. But I don't mind coming in and getting what I need here, so it's not a critical thing for me. But I think it's a very critical thing for the town in general. And what is it with the assessors that they're objecting to? Are they not able to flow their stuff over because?
They wanna look remotely from home.
They, they've had connectivity issues, they're worried about corrupted data, they wanna be able to access it.
Corrupted data was on there, and this Dick explained.
Possibly.
Remote was, remote was one thing, you know, if they're working from home.
Remote was only one part of it.
Well, I'm saying, it was one thing.
But they're so little that they do it from home, on, with regard to the tax program. There's, there's twice a year when we do the conversions, like, excuse me, when we do the, uh, tax bridge. That's twice a year.
And don't they check rebates and stuff like that?
They can do that from their office, if, if they wanna do that, not, they don't do that from home, they can't do it from home.
Not rebates?
A baby's exemption.
I mean, a baby's, a baby's-
They really can't do that from home, everything is here.
Yeah. I think the selectmen are just gonna have to make a decision.
I don't think it's up to the selectmen, if you, oh.
They own the systems.
I thought we made a decision, right?
I, I disagree with that. The system is under the administration of the-
You might be administering the data, but they're, they own the systems that you're using.
The, the system is under the administration of the legislature.
Hmm, not the hardware, I don't think so.
I do.
Well, there's, that's, there's an issue regarding that too, right? If that's the case or not. I'm looking at these emails here, because if, six, chapter 60, section 8 says, "All books kept by the collector are the property of the town."
All books, and again, the data is not a problem. I don't have a problem with making sure that you have the data.
The question isn't whose property is, it's, the question is, what department has jurisdiction over it? Has nothing to do with the ownership of, whether the town owns it. Town owns everything in this building.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, so, and as good managers, we would like to see us go to the cloud, so we can, everyone can manage their affairs better.
I don't disagree with that.
I don't either. I, I, I don't think people disappoint.
I, I-
I think we're increasing productivity amongst the departments and cross transfer.
We do have issues with it at that time. And again, because our office uses it all the time, and that assessors, again-
Richard uses it all the time, and he's on the cloud, I use it all the time, I'm on the cloud.
And we were having issues, and I decided, unfortunately, it wasn't out.
Do you remember what the issue was, Eva?
I don't, there were all kinds of issues.
So, it was, it was 2018 or 19?
It was 2018, dude.
It was one, one, two years.
The, the whole thing went to the cloud, and we were having, um, we were having problems where we were dropping signals. We were also having some problems with the accounting program, but I, I was also having serious problems with the bank programs, um, remote scanning, where, you know, you've gotta have, you've gotta have a good check, is that what it was? But this is when the, um, service-
That was Vadar, was it?
Yes, well, V, we were doing Vadar in the banking, whatever, this was all happening at the same time. We were on copper-
At the same time.
We were on copper internet.
Right.
And we was, we struggled with that. You went back to, to the localized Vadar system, and we kept struggling with this, and then when they put the fiber in, all those problems, with both the Vadar accounting and the banking program went away.
That's nice.
So, I don't appreciate this, by the comment.
No, no, that, that was nice, that they went away.
So, the problem that you had when you were Vadar online, I think could be easily attributed to the problem, the reason, the, the fact that we had copper internet back then.
Because you were having problems with it as well.
Yeah.
What was all of your programs?
With, uh, with the, um, the RDC with Monmouth Savings Bank, and with the Vadar accounting, and a little bit with check writers, you know, so, and those were all web-based programs.
Right.
That all went away when they dropped the fiber line. Everything got better. I think it's a reasonable assumption that the problems that we were having with Vadar-
Were the internet.
Were, right, were, were our connection. We were, we were losing signal in the middle of a transaction. We'd be uploading a batch, and the damn thing would crash. It was ugly, no question about it.
Yes, it was.
But I think we solved the problem, we're moving that fiber.
Can I say?
Well, you're gonna have to say it one way or the other, Don.
I, I, well-
Backing up what you already seemed to want to do.
Again, it's not under the administration of the selectmen. The program is under the administration of the collector's office.
Yeah, I understand the problem, and I'm just asking you to be a team player, and you say, "No, fine, this, our discussion's over, thank you."
Okay.
Well, if we have to go, if we have to go to legal counsel to do this, we will. The next item on the agenda.
What's the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is the Hampton-Wilbraham regional budget discussion, which I need you here too for this for a minute.
Really?
Just some-
Oh, you want, you bought the paid schedule, oh yeah, I don't care.
No, no, I don't mind the payment schedule. I, I wanna know, so, you, you have some expertise on this, I'm sure, as the moderator, as the moderator. So, the town of Wilbraham is having a different number, the assessment. So, what if they, so, than us, than we have?
If, if they come up with a lower number than us, if we do, we go to the recommended, they come up with a lower number, the school committee will now have a choice. It can either do a joint town meeting and try to get the budget through that way, or, which, if Wilbraham is against it, that's a loser, or they can just cut our assessment.
Which I think we need an article in the fall to accept their lower, we did in the past.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
For our assessment, that's fine.
Paperwork, basically.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but they would, you know, they would just lower the assessment level, or they would fight, and we, not our problem. It's a win-win. Either they take, either-
So we're going first, we're going first, then after June, then after June 3rd.
If you do anything other than vote that number-
That's a rejection of the budget.
Then you're, you're playing into Wilbraham's politics.
Right.
And you're, you're influencing what they do. I'd say, we're gonna win either way.
Right.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, because then they have to do, if they have a special, if they have to do a, I guess they, I guess what I read is, let's see if I got this right, that you go back to the, they can go back to lower, they can agree to it, and come back with a new number, they have to go back to town meeting to do that. If the town meeting rejects that, then they can go to the two-town meeting.
You're saying if Wilbraham votes a lower number, they have to come back to a Hampton for a special meeting?
I don't, I don't know, it's like, it's like, I don't know.
No, I don't think so. You know, I, I don't think there's any law that says you can, that we're not allowed to spend less than we appropriate.
Because they're running, because they're so late, June 3rd.
Yeah, but it gets into that joint town meeting that's required when you have two offsetting votes, and that's what I'm wondering about.
Right.
And then you get into, if you don't get it done in time, you get into the 112 budget.
You gotta get done by July 1st.
Right.
And their, their town meeting is so late.
Right.
June 3rd.
The school may go to cave.
Hello?
If Wilbraham votes no, they're gonna deal with it.
I guess the other question was, can Wilbraham lower the assessment number?
No, they can vote a lower number.
They can vote a lower number?
They can vote a lower number, it doesn't, you know.
But does that reject the, is that a no vote, then? No on the assessment? That's a no on the assessment, right?
It's not a no, it is, um, it is voting an alternate number.
I don't know if they can do that.
I don't think you can do that.
And I don't understand why the selectmen allowed the finance committee to put that on, well, the selectmen set the warrant.
Right.
Well, if the finance committee came to you and said, "We want you to put an article on," you would do it, you'd do it for any committee.
It's not an article, it's a budget.
It's a budget.
Well, it's a, that, you, all they're doing is the recommended number. I mean, that's the finance committee's job, isn't it?
Yeah, but, but their warrant article, Dick.
Something different about rejection.
Their warrant, yeah, their warrant article doesn't say, their warrant article doesn't say, this, the assessment is eight million, and we're recommending seven million, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand.
They're changing the number.
They're changing the number. So the only thing that people are gonna be voting on is the lower number from the finance committee.
They don't see both numbers?
They don't see both numbers.
It's not an Article II budget like ours?
No, no.
Well, that's why I told Michelle what they have to do to amend it. If they go the lower number, then somebody withstanding, you know, for the, on the school committee, they have to get up and amend it, so at least there's a discussion.
Right.
They also have this Article 17, and we talked about that, in their thing where they, it's a parliamentary procedure for financial matters, and apparently they have it every year according to Nick, where all motions to appropriate funds not recommended by the finance committee, and-
Must be accompanied by an offset decrease?
Something like that, yeah.
If they can get the town meeting to vote for that.
Well, you have to say where the money's gonna come from.
Every year.
Every year.
No, I mean, so this has been passed every year on there.
Yeah, there are some lying-hearted moderators who have tried to do that on their own, without the town meeting support, but they're, they're right up against their levy limit. So this is the tool that they have to keep themselves from, um, finding themselves in an override situation, by getting the town meeting to, but if the town meeting doesn't buy into it, it's not biting.
But again, they do, they do have a complete, one warrant article, that is their entire budget, Article 19, which is inclusive of the school budget, and they make an exclamation point, that's the only one they disagreed with in the entire budget, requested and recommended, was the extra, out of their $30 million request for the school budget, they're arguing about $67,000, which Don spends on coffee in a week, you know.
Cookies.
Cookies, thank you. Local, locally sourced. So, I don't think we need to get into their-
Pickleball courts are good, isn't it?
I don't think they have to do anything at all.
No, no, but I do think, I do go back and, I, I, with Don, I think there's some-
I'm just wondering what the process is gonna be.
I also, I think there's some validity to the point where, I don't think you're allowed to argue with the requested number.
No, I think you have to boil it up right now.
Something in '70 or '71 that's about that request, because we've had this happen before.
It's been 30 years, you know, since we've had to do this, but I vaguely do remember that, yeah, you, you might be right, it might be a yes or no.
There's something, but, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, something is ringing a bell somewhere deep in there. It's deep.
All those car cranks.
You know, dust up the cobwebs.
That's right. So, again, we can sit back as, you know, we'll take care of our part.
Next week.
Yeah, just sit in the back row with popcorn.
Are we invited to go over in June?
Didn't say, didn't get an invitation.
We'll let there, get them to come over.
I'm sure you got, there's a non-voter section, like, and you can sit in.
We paid for our high school, we can go over, right?
Yeah.
Hold a meeting.
All right, thank you, Richard, for your input.
Okay.
Want to stay for government study?
Well, that was my question, what was that gonna be about?
I don't know.
Oh, that, the government study was just gonna be about, they had, just gonna go over the, the non-warrant recommendations, like, they talked a lot about, you know, improving the website, that, you know, doing-
Okay, so they're coming in to meet with you about that?
No, they're not.
They have their own meeting.
They have their own meeting.
Oh, that's great, good.
Just to say, and I asked Don if we could actually push this off, because we got other things, and we've lost the schedule, but I did ask, one recommendation that was in there was moving town meeting to a weekend, like Wilbraham did. We've had the concern in the past that some younger people with, you know, issues, uh, scheduling things at night, can't come to the Monday night meeting, and I do think that's a decent thing to look at in the future. Heck, I would have put it in my top five for addressing it this year, maybe even ahead of changing the name of our selectmen.
I would have been that first at everything.
Right. So I think, because we've heard it for a number of years, it's a concern.
Last fall, there's a lot of people that wanted that.
So, when you talk about the, the list of the, I don't wanna say Phase B.
Right, but the, the, the question is, how many people are being inconvenienced by a Saturday that aren't complaining? Now, the only people you hear from are the people who don't like the Monday night meeting. You know, the people who like it aren't, aren't talking to you. If it was a Saturday meeting, I don't know how to get good data on that decision. I mean, you know, I'm more likely to be unavailable on a Saturday than on a Monday night, but I'm not normal, I get that, in any way.
It might be, you have just, and I talked about, you know, Craig is probably our best source on something like that.
How many soccer games you got?
No, that's my point, you have activities on Saturday as well.
Soccer, baseball, hockey, whatever.
You might have as many conflicts, but I think you're not gonna have the school conflict on a Saturday. So the potential for more people to come on a Saturday is greater, right?
It's also the out of work thing, there's some people who are-
School night, right.
Out of work, babysitter, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I wouldn't-
To me, it would have been the top five to explore for this, this town meeting.
I wouldn't make a change without doing a serious survey.
Yeah, that could be a referendum question.
Could be.
Non-binding, non-binding question.
Maybe they should put it in their report when they do the report thing, hey, we're gonna bring this up in the fall for a question.
Non-binding question.
Yeah, because it would require a-
Well, a question at the town meeting.
A general bylaw change.
So you're gonna get the people who can make the Monday night meeting voting on it? That's right.
That's right. Well, information always straw, straw poll, basically, yeah.
I, I don't know, I'd find some way to do an outreach on that, to really get that information.
Okay. And last question for you, did Craig and I get our paperwork done?
Well, Craig did.
Okay, just checking. I know I gave you mine.
Direct deposit?
Yeah, I got a, uh, login thing and everything.
You did, okay, all right. Didn't remember that.
Don wants his in cash.
I'm gonna have a login with you on this one.
You want yours in cash?
You don't need it, yeah.
I thought I filled one of those out a long time ago.
Direct deposit.
Yeah, I think Sophie changed it, probably.
Yeah.
Offshore.
I just, you know, I should note for the record that Don was the first one to comply with that rule.
He's retired.
He didn't even use a cellphone, he's got direct deposit.
He, well, he knows where his checks are. A lot of young people don't have any idea where their checkbook is, they got the starter checks in the bottom of a drawer somewhere. Anyway, sorry.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, take a cookie. So, okay to push off the GSC stuff till-
Yeah, sure, no one cares, I know. Uh, let's see, the, okay, so we got the Board of Health Coordinator, IT position, facilities management, is it one position, two positions, three positions?
I thought we didn't endorse the retirement thing, I don't know.
No, we're just, no, we're just gonna add these terms.
Well, we got it, I mean-
I think facilities management definitely needs to be its own thing.
Right.
And I think we need somebody to be able to go to all buildings, give us accountability, and, you know, anything that needs to be fixed, like a boiler, or furnace, or the toilet not flushing.
First thing, I, I would, ask, ask Mark, you know, does he have somebody capable of doing it, who's already got on staff, basically, or, yeah.
And that would be part of their duties of their highway department, or-
No, it could be extended on, but at least you don't have to hire another person, just, you know, just to get that done.
Well, if, if there's a person available.
Okay, find out first if there's somebody.
Or even if there's, there's somebody that's part-time that wants extra hours, because I think there's a person who could-
Right, maybe one of the transfer station people could be a person, yeah, right, so.
Oh, yeah.
And so, basically, we're saying internal posting is what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we need a good description, Brian, I don't know if you have a thought on that, or, it's gotta be calmly done, right, there you go.
Yeah, a lot of it's here, right, the facilities department.
Yeah, what about the IT? Because we gotta get this transferred to the cloud.
I think we have a good service with our current already, although I'd like, you know, on-site maybe to be more than once a month.
Well, then, so maybe, does, do we need to change the contract to give more time?
What exactly would we want more IT services for, I mean?
I, I thought we were talking, well, the web thing, or is it more, are you talking like, was that responsibility for like, doing the town webpage IT? Because I thought our only IT discussion was in the police, where we were talking about whether we were gonna-
We have the service here, you know, which we have our IT vendor for. I mean, there's, there's little things here, like, you know, the YouTube stuff, the social media stuff that we do, but I think, you know, that's pretty encompassed under this department.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But you don't think we need someone here all the time?
No, I think we just make sure that we have that channel open to, and the way they have it now, where they can do the remote login, et cetera.
Remote in on off days.
Right.
Anybody's connected to the network.
True, anybody's connected, the network can be.
All right, let it go. All right.
I'm not letting it go.
You think? Board of Health part, I think we've got that list pretty well.
Did we post that?
Down to three pages.
Yeah. We did?
We did not post it, I'm just waiting for the go-ahead.
Do we bother internally posting it, or put it out there? I mean, do you think there's anybody looking for that type of upgrade in their position, et cetera?
Internally?
I can't think of anyone but.
We got so many, how many people we got left, we got? We got somebody's mother, we got, we got the known for the cemetery, advisory's looking for someone, we've got.
Post that down.
We got, what else we got?
Forget it.
Is that something you think we could have ready to sleep on?
We still got the, isn't the, the, is the conservation commission, they need a agent.
I think it'd be, you know, imperative that we get that out there sooner than later, just so we can get some cross-training. Interchange, and we have, we should have.
We have enough money in temp help to cover any cross-training, right?
What was next steps with facilities management? We're gonna talk to Mark, is that how we love it?
Just get a good description first, and then internally post it. And again, like I say, you've got capable people with the transfer station, highway department, could be the fire department, who's to say? I mean, you got some pretty good tech people.
Yeah.
You know, especially if, you know, we're looking at TWB, TWB for options too, then, you know, it's gonna be, a building we wanna make sure that doesn't need seven million dollars worth of repairs.
Yeah, we're responsible for, we can't get anyhow, right?
You bring that up, who's the, who's the guy like Herb or Daryl wouldn't want the job? I mean, they're both very capable. You know, we're not talking the huge amount of hours.
Yeah, that's true, you know, Herb does a great job over there, as it is.
Daryl, should be practically lives at Green Meadows, so.
Yeah, yeah, he's always right here.
Right, so.
Not a bad idea.
I think we might have a good pool right inside our own.
Right. Uh, the next thing is, I wanna, I just wanna ask permission to speak to the town attorney and also speak to Senator Olivera and Brian Ash about clarifying that, because it's a real, it's a real issue. I mean, we've had, we've had questions on our ballot that, under fifty, under what they were talking about last week, wouldn't, and it shouldn't have been on the ballot. And other towns have, and there's dozens of towns that have done it the way we tried to do it. So, I would just kinda wanna talk and get some clarification, cause we're gonna be, there's gonna be lots of changes coming up, you know?
Well, I think it's one of those things you talk about, you talk, do you ask for forgiveness afterwards? Towns do it because nobody complains.
I know, exactly, I know, but maybe now we need clarification, we're gonna have someone who's gonna complain every time they don't like the particular question that's on the ballot. So.
I'm okay with it.
And, uh, it, it, plus, it, it seems kind of, I don't wanna say, use the term, but it seems kind of ridiculous to me that they would, you would expect a town to vote at a town meeting, to do something, and then wait a whole year to bring it to the town election. That's what they're saying.
Yeah, or your, or your, yeah, your meeting needs to be thirty-five, thirty-six days from your.
Thirty-six days before, you have to have a special, you have to have a special election.
Right, but I can see, but this, I don't understand what you're saying, but if they're saying the ballot needs to be set thirty-five days, but you actually don't have the authority to put it on the ballot, the clarity needs to be there.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
I mean, how can you do it, yeah, right, what are we gonna make sure our elections?
Yeah.
Five weeks later, every time?
Yes. And what do you do in a case like Wilbraham where they're having their election before their town meeting?
Yeah, exactly.
Other towns do that too, other towns do that too. All right, uh, selectmen reports?
Uh, we had a meeting at the building committee this morning, obviously going for the. Uh, obviously gearing up for town, senior center building committee, gearing up for the town meeting, obviously, and the election following. You've probably seen the signs around town, and to be clear, those were from the friends of the Hampton seniors. They're all out at this point, and they're looking at, should they get more? They are checking with Brian and, I believe, and Rita, sorry, Rita, Eva, for clarity on what they can hand out or have or display at the, at the town meeting.
I think they have to be watched.
Again, it's information, well, that's if you're taking a position, if it's informational only, such as the flyer they used, which had no position, here's a picture of the building, that can typically be as a handout prior. Again, it cannot take a position yet or nay. Planning board has a meeting on Wednesday. One thing that's being addressed right now is the potential for Kimmy Lane to come forward for acceptance. Unfortunately, it's been twenty years since I signed it when I was chair of the planning board, and some of the documentation has to be, does it need a, a system? You know, which was a question. Some of the research we're doing talks about an option to put a dry hydrant into the Kibbe Pond, which is, you know, to the east, north of it. This is the only subdivision that was put in after that was added into the bylaw. So, we haven't had a new road since Kibbe Lane in '04.
See, it's.
So, you know, so, that's the biggest thing happening in, and of course, master plan, you're, you're part of that, Don?
Yes.
You know, they're motoring along.
Motoring along, they're gonna have the, um, master plan, the, the consultant wants to have six meetings based on specific topics like public edu, uh, public safety, or facilities, or something like that. And for just the people who work in a, in a committee, then they're gonna have two larger meetings in June for the public.
Okay, I wanted to ask you about that, cause I saw the thing, you know, they're talking afternoon, now, the majority of people who are elected to boards, afternoon meetings are probably not good.
Yeah, well, the problem is.
I know the.
There's some flexibility, they said there's some flexibility.
Can we trade one or something?
We're gonna try to do that, yeah. So. What do you got?
Uh, I have nothing to report, other than, don't make your meeting on, I think it's June 12th? I said, don't make your meeting, I think it's June 12th that we're having the fiber meeting.
Oh, June 12th.
I think that's June 12th, I'll double-check that table.
Town administrator report?
Uh, just quickly, um, uh, the chair signed a landowner concurrence form for Audubon to submit the application to manage the pitch pine forest that the board had talked about previously. I'm trying to get the credit card straightened out, uh, with the business form that Don had signed, cause we don't have any authorized officers anymore since the former town administrator left. I met with Rick Green today at TWB to go over the town meeting layout, and saw the new sound system, so we'll have that.
New sound system?
Yeah. We've asked Herb to get everything set up, and we'll probably head over there Monday around noon time to make sure everything's.
Now, we'll let sound system roll into our Zoom though, cause last time we had a lot of problems with the display and.
That's what we'll have to.
You know, cause we didn't, I like where the other towns have, kind of like the Owl does, with a bit of the split screens type thing with, you know, a bit of the audience and projections.
Yeah, they, those are typically manned, right?
Mm-hmm. Push a button.
Staff, I should say.
Switch camera.
Cameras to.
Camera beach. Camera aid.
Which we don't have that.
No, this week, we got public access, I have. So, no resolution of that at this point.
No resolution on that.
Do we have an operator for next week?
No, but I think we can handle that internally, I would think.
Last time, the operator had to be down by the projector.
That's a lot to tell, we don't have a Zoom operator either, right?
Right, so, I don't think you'd be able to be down there if you weren't thinking of being the operator. Ted sat down there last couple times.
We have some equipment ideas we can talk about.
All right. Long cable down to the projector.
What do you have on there? Uh, well, we're, hopefully get it, okay. Um, I sent an email from Senator Olivera's office about project requests that they're asking for, if anybody, if you want to give me suggestions as to.
Well, we gotta ask her that sidewalk money is, still around?
Oh, and transportation violation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's go down.
The windows in this building.
Sure, the governor has a nice sidewalk right front of her apartment, but, geez.
Real quick, eighteen, uh, town meeting presentations, um, water, senior center, fire.
Presentations?
Yeah. These people might wanna give an informational presentation during the town meeting.
You got a governing study, fiber.
Government study. Well, that's a lot now, governing study.
Water.
You say fiber or fire?
Fiber.
Okay.
Fiber. The fiber, the fire's not really presented, it's asking for fifty for the RFQ.
Correct. Okay, so not that.
Not a presentation, it's just.
Water, senior center, government study.
So, Don Collins is doing.
Birotic.
It's not really a presentation for the seniors either, it's, there's a motion, and there'll be a short, and I made the point during the meeting, this isn't like giving the recap what's happening, this is, we're asking for this, it should be a five-minute presentation, and then questions.
I, I would probably recommend no presentation and take good questions before, cause I'm sure there's gonna be questions.
Yeah.
What about water, is you gonna do one from water?
No presentation, I think it's just, you know, the, the question, or the question on the, on the warrant, and then, you know, answer questions, probably be some discussion.
Right, but I thought you were doing, you were doing a presentation on Phase B that we were doing, you were gonna tell them where we're going.
I, I think we'll go somewhere going, I don't think it's gonna be an in-depth presentation, or just kinda say, hey, you know.
Couple minutes, here we are.
Maybe thirty seconds.
Well, I mean, that might be the, the thing for the, uh, Phase B map up on the screen or something.
Yeah, we could do that.
And fiber would be?
Couple minutes, most. There's probably, maybe it's probably gonna be like thirty seconds too.
Oh, and then technically, government study's supposed to give a, uh.
They're gonna give a report, right? Right, but we had to vote and give them the report, right?
You can vote yea or nay in here, or accept it. And then we, we have hanging out there the, the website upgrades that we need to figure out how to pay the remaining, the, the remaining portion of that bill, and then that will, that's sort of tied into a discussion we didn't have about the government study recommendations in terms of upgrading the website and trying to get a, a better presence on social media, so.
Well, I think part of the thing with the government, with the website upgrade, we paid for this better one, or we're going to, whatever, where that comes out of reserve account, law and claims, selectman expense, we have some well-funded accounts. I think we need to hear from them. I think they had a brief thing from Bob, but not really a full-depth, what is when you get civic plus, plus?
What do you get?
What do you get? I think Wilbraham, Wilbraham has civic plus, plus, and they have quite of information. What they don't have, I was looking for their warrant.
Yes.
And I couldn't find it on there, I had to get.
It's very difficult to find.
Right, so, it looks busy, but I don't think navigation is a hundred percent there.
They do have all their contracts on their website, too.
That's nice.